Good evening, everybody. Tonight is Wednesday, March 19th, 2025. We're in the Eldon F. Marrow Board of Selectmen Room on the second floor of Town Hall. The time is 6:20 PM. Before we stand, or ask those that can stand to stand for the pledge, please be aware that this meeting is being recorded for use on the Internet and our local cable station. If you could join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so tonight, we are starting with a joint session of the Water Commissioners and the Selectmen. At this time, the Board of Selectmen meeting is open. I'd like to turn it over to Chairman Cabral to open the Water Commission.
Can anybody open the March 19th meeting, joint meeting of the Water Commissioners and the Board of Selectmen?
Superb. Okay, so at this time, from the Board of Selectmen perspective, I'd like to entertain a motion to enter into executive session for purposes of conducting a strategy session for negotiations with non-union personnel in coordination with the Water Commissioners, specifically the position of Office Manager in the Water Department. The Board will return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session. I need a roll call vote.
Perez, yes.
Lee, yes.
And Ryan, yes. Chairman Cabral?
Hey, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session for purposes of conducting a strategy session for negotiations with non-union personnel in coordination with the Board of Selectmen, specifically for the position of Office Manager in the Water Department. The Water Commissioners will not return to open session at the conclusion of executive session. Roll call vote.
Creighton, yes.
Cruz, yes.
Cabral, yes.
All right. All right, everyone. Back into open session, Board of Selectmen meeting. At this time, we'll move down the agenda. The second is warrant and Board of Selectmen business. First on the agenda is a vote to ratify Kerry Buckley's employment contract as Office Manager for the West Bridgewater Water Department. And I'll just say a motion.
I make a motion to accept Kerry Buckley's employment contract as Office Manager for West Bridgewater Department as presented.
Second?
Any discussion?
No.
All right. Vote? Vote in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes. All right, moving down, next on the list is a vote to increase the hours for the Principal Clerk, who is Kelly Cataldo.
Make a motion to increase the hours of the Principal Clerk, Kelly Cataldo, as presented.
Second?
So, just for the record, this is an increase from 20 hours to 30 hours. It's still a part-time position, but just an increase of 10 hours a week. So, any discussion?
No.
Vote in favor?
Aye.
Okay, three votes. Mr. Moore, the floor is yours. Now, let me start by saying, the gentleman who has served as our Building Commissioner and over the last several months, Mr. Moore.
Supposed to be 60 days, but here we are.
60 times two, or three?
This may be a little weird coming in. Usually, you meet with employees on their way in the door, not on their way out the door. But I want to thank you for having confidence in me to take the position. It's been a great time. I really enjoyed it. You've got a lot of great people working for you. Town Hall staff is awesome, and I've worked with most of the department heads in town over that nine-month period. But the thing that impresses me most is I've worked in, well, I've worked for 20 years in Bridgewater, I've worked in Wayham for three years, and of course, my involvement here, I've worked some over in East Bridgewater, some in Rainham, and some in Copper. I've worked, I started working with a three-member Board of Selectmen with an Executive Secretary, and then went to an Administrative Secretary, and then went to a Town Manager, a Week Town Manager. We went to a five-member Board of Selectmen, and then we ended up with a Town Council. And after I retired, I went back to work in a town with a five-member Board of Selectmen. I got to know them all pretty well. It was a really refreshing change after going through that transition in Bridgewater. And I'd just like to say, I know there's not a lot of people here tonight, maybe some people are listening on cable TV, but you've got a great thing going here in town with a three-member Board of Selectmen. You've got a great town energy, you've got a great staff, and, you know, the grass might look greener in somebody else's yard once in a while with a different form of town government, but you've got it all right here. And I can only tell you, hang on to it as long as you can. Social media, I know, is a challenge. The lack of newspapers is a challenge, but hang on to it. In my opinion, you've got the best of all the worlds, so.
I think I agree, and I personally want to thank you. Prior to you being here, the previous regime, if you will, from a Building Commissioner standpoint, I was receiving two complaints a week, sometimes beginning a season, three complaints a week, and I have not heard a single word, which you should take as a compliment since you've come into that position. So, you know, I can't thank you enough for bringing some stability and some structure back into that job and that role. And I know as you leave back into retirement, we've extended you probably more than you wanted to be, so thank you for that as well. But it has been great to have you, and we're grateful for what you've done in terms of riding that ship and getting everything on, and we think we're passing it on to some good hands, so thank you.
A little note on, you have the manager coming in, showing my age a little bit. I had his dad in school when I was a school teacher.
Oh, boy.
His dad in school?
Who? I had him work for me as the Assistant Building Inspector, so I had a chance to give him a lot of tips and so forth, and he has trained his son. And what experience I've had with his son, who's coming here, I think he's a lot like his dad. He talked to the people over in Rainham, his dad does a great job, and I think Nick will do a very good job for the town. Much appreciated.
Superb.
That's great. Yeah, thank you. You came in when we needed you, and you did the job, and I think you did it in half the time, so it was great, and we really, really appreciate you. Like, we needed you, and you helped us, and we really appreciate that, yeah.
Thank you. And I think you're getting out just in time, because before I turned the microphone over to Mike, he was saying a little earlier that he's looking to build something else.
Hey, Mr. Moore, you know that you have my total, anything you ever need from this town or from me personally, please let me know. You have done an incredible job. You answered the call when you didn't necessarily need to, and like the other two members of the Board said, we thank you. You have not only done the job, you have showed the town how well you could do the job and how much you care about this town. One day, we'll accept you as a resident.
If I wasn't so far down the road, I'd seriously consider it. I've been coming here to West Bridgewater for over 70 years. I've got friends and family up here. My godparents were the Bragggers. Some of the older residents will remember them up on North Elm Street with their business and so forth. But it's been a great time, both in town and the job and everything, and it's, my health is good, I'm not planning on going anywhere, but it's a great one to close the curtain on this career, so.
You'll still be doing the inspection of weights and scales?
Oh, yeah. I'll still be doing weights and measures as well.
We'll make weights and measures.
I lost my knees and back, hold up, total of those five-gallon cans, but we'll see.
Excellent, sir. We're glad to still have you coming around town.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Okay.
And again, I want to say thank you as well. You know, we're in the building every day, and Jeff is entirely right between what happened before and what happens now. Dave, you've done an excellent job, you've worked well with the staff. You know, everything else that they've said, I'm not going to reiterate except that it really should be said again. But there are two items of note. One is, is that he will remain our sailor of weights, as you have said, so we get to still see him. But the other part that I don't want to go, that cannot be missed, is that we have an extremely bright and intelligent woman that's working in the Building Department, her name is Jill. But Jill had no prior municipal experience, and to think about that Dave came in and took somebody who certainly was receptive to learning, but has really, I mean, she in six months, if you talk to her, you might just think that she's been there for 14 years. So, it's a tribute to Dave, but it's also going to be a legacy to Dave as well, because if Jill, you're listening, we expect you to be here for another 30. So, but in all honesty, Dave was very good in that office. He created stability when we needed it, did an excellent job, and we're all better for it.
With Jill, she came in, I was here two weeks, and all of a sudden, my staff is gone. And she came in, and because of her background, she was a self-employed real estate agent for many years in her family, and she believed in customer service, and that's exactly the way I felt. We got along great. She's done an awesome job, and I hope she stays with the town as long as you need her.
Well, I think a handshake's in order as a thank you. Thank you so much. Great, I appreciate it.
Squeeze throat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We got another meeting to get to now, huh? Yeah. John and I haven't gotten out of here this town politics.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is a vote to ratify Brenda Dorito's employment as Head Secretary Assistant to the Tax Collector. Brenda is here. I invite you to say a couple of words, introduce yourself to us in the town.
Do you need me to stand up?
Whatever you comfortable with.
However you want to do it.
I can stand. Hi, I'm Brenda Dorito. My family and I moved to West Bridgewater about nine years ago now. I was lucky enough to be a stay-home mom for 11 years, and then I went over to the school district where I worked in the cafeteria. Started at Spring Street School, went over to Howard School, loved it. Unfortunately, I ruptured my Achilles, and it wasn't a job, being on my feet, that I could do anymore. So, the past three years, I've been working for Charles River Labs. I have a daughter who's a junior over at the high school, and a son who's a freshman, and I'm just really excited for this next chapter.
Fantastic. Any discussion?
No discussion.
Whereas you've just heard, this is an awesome place to work.
I hope you're excited.
I think Mr. Moore sold the town for us, and we will take it from there. Entertain a motion.
I make a motion to ratify Brenda Dorito's employment as Head Secretary Assistant to the Tax Collector.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And it'll be effective March 24th?
Effective March 21st.
Fourth.
24th, that's what I heard.
She wants a few days off before she has to do her returns.
I was like, Mr. Moore, we'll see you tomorrow. She's like, all right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brenda. Have a good night.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Moving forward, next on the agenda is the Board of Assessors and the Heroes Act Overview. Paula and Daniela?
Yes.
So, I'm just going to stop for a second. So, if you guys want to come up, please. So, the Heroes Act was passed about nine months ago, and it was very heralded at that time, but the truth of the matter is, we've uncovered, as other municipalities have, is that there's some nuances to the law. So, we want to make sure that we do the right thing by veterans, and we also want to make sure we do the right thing by everybody else who receives exemptions as well. So, you're going to be voting, as the Board of Selectmen, you will be voting on placing warrant articles at your next meeting on April 2nd. But this law is so nuanced, and what we really want, and what they're going to do to watch you through it, is I want to make sure you have all the information in a couple of weeks to digest it, ask questions, receive answers, so that way, on April 2nd, you'll be more comfortable as to what it is you ultimately decide to place at Town Meeting for approval.
All right. I will have Daniela explain a little bit what this is, because I don't know what you guys have heard about it or what you guys have talked about so far with it.
We've heard some and not much, but we do, there are like a few people that watch this, so we'll go right from the beginning.
Okay. Daniela?
So, the Hero Act was passed, the governor assigned it, I believe, in August of this past year, so it made some changes to benefits to veterans, and one of them is how disabled veterans are qualified for motor vehicle abatements now. So, if you're 100% disabled through the VA, come in with your letter to the Assessor's office, because you can get your excise tax abated. And then they additionally made some changes to optional exemptions for veterans. So, we currently offer exemptions to blind, to elderly and low-income elderly, and to surviving spouses, and then there's a bunch of clauses known as 22 that are for veterans. So, in our town, the ones being utilized right now are the 22, the 22A, and the 22E. And with the optional exemptions that were added through the Heroes Act, there's a clause called a 22I. And what that clause does is it adds the cost of living adjustment that the state puts out each year onto the exemption amount. So, if a veteran is 22, they would get $400 through their exemption, and then whatever the cost of living would be added to it. So, this past year, the cost of living was 3.4%, so I calculated that out in that next column, and those would be the exemption amounts using that. Now, historically, at Town Meetings, since, I believe it was 2002, the town has voted to add 25% on all exemptions that we offer. So, that next column is, if we continue to do that, what the 25% would look like for all of the exemptions. With the Hero Act, they have a 22J, which is a similar thing, where you can apply an additional amount to the exemption up to 100%. The only thing is, if we take the 22J COLA for our veterans, we can't continue doing the 25% across the board that we've been doing for all of our exemptions. So, you can change that amount at Town Meeting. Like I said, it's historically been 25%, but we can go anywhere up to 100%, and it applies to all of our exemptions. So, if we pull that out, then the other exemptions that we have, the 17D, the 41C, the 37A, they lose that 25% that they've been getting. There are a couple of optional things that you can put in for some of them, such as the 41C is the low-income elderly. There are things we can look at to increase that one, but the Board of Assessors kind of felt that it's best to just apply a percentage to all of the exemptions. And at the meeting tonight, that they were talking, that they would approve the continued use of the 25% and the cost of living increase for the veteran exemptions. I did, though, continue out the calculations for 50%, 75%, and 100%, because with the optional exemptions, it's taxpayer-funded. The state doesn't give us any more money, so the money has to come from somewhere, so it comes from our overlay account to make up the difference. So, that's why I have a totals amount, and then what the difference would be compared to what we've been paying out of the overlay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for doing the deep dive in this.
Yeah.
I think you and I spoke early on when this Heroes Act came about, because I'm a veteran.
Right.
And so, I did have a little bit of a hard time breaking down the chart here, but it seems that it was broken down by percentage rating. So, basically, line 22, the first line, the 25%, so you broke down based off of what the disability rating would be.
Yeah, so you would get that first standard amount normally through the state exemptions, and then I added from there. So, either 25%, 50%, and for the veteran clauses alone, I did the cost of living, because I, the Board of Assessors would like that to be a warrant article at Town Meeting.
No, and thank the entire Board for spending time on this, because I tried to read that, and it wasn't plain English.
The exemptions are complicated all the way.
It was very complicated. It was not plain English. I'm like, I don't even know what I'm reading right now, so I'm sorry if I've taken the wrong.
No, no, no. I'm still a little stunned, and I believe you, that, you know, if we increase the veterans, we remove, in essence, the others.
Which is, yeah.
Which is not, I'm sorry, it doesn't fit the name of it.
No, but I think, and I think this is what happened, is that the state gave some leniency as far as when it comes to, and please correct me if I'm incorrect, the state gave leniency on percentages for the veterans, and the towns had the ability to max out that, max out the, what's the word I'm looking for, what the return is basically?
Exemption?
The exemption, yes. So, the state, we maxed out what the state, the exemption was, right? So, even though the Heroes Act was to cover those towns or cities that weren't providing any of the exemptions, what we were already providing, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is already, was already more than what the Heroes Act was, would be. Am I right, or?
Yeah, so the Heroes Act gave more options.
Right.
So, different towns, some do more like us, where it's a blanket amount that goes across to everyone, and some don't. They kind of pick and choose and maybe only apply to veterans, or do different things. The research I did is that every town is different. Everyone around us does something different. Nobody does it exactly the same way. Everyone offers exemptions, but they're all done differently. So, the way we've historically done it is applying that 25% to all, which is an increase more than what the state requires us to give.
So, Jeff, if we could go back one, so I think this will help, because you're entirely right. I think this was the unintended consequence.
Yeah.
So, this is the article that we accept every single year, and we took it right out of our most recent book. And you'll see that the motion is to accept the Acts of 1986. The Acts of 1986 empowered the towns to be able to provide additional exemptions, so for veterans, we did an additional 25%, but the Acts required that you had to do the exact percentage across the board. So, the issue is, is that if we decide to do the Heroes Act, then as soon as you do the Heroes Act, you cannot accept the Acts of 1986 as presented, because you can no longer have a difference of the exemption rate. However, what is positive, or is possible, is that we could accept the Acts of 1986 up to 100%. So, the point is, if you still want to provide veterans at 100% of the exemption, you could do that, except that by accepting the Acts in 1986, you would also apply 100% to elderly, widows, and the blind. And that's why Daniela did an excellent job on that other sheet to show you that if you do it across the board, what it's actually going to cost.
And that's, and that's, I don't mean to cut you off, but that is the issue, right? Because that money's not funded from the state. We are really shifting a tax burden to, you know, from, away from the people with the exemption and to people that don't have an exemption.
Right. So, when, correct. So, what the Board of Assessors did, which I thought was very good on their end, if we go back to the other screen for a second, is that you'll see the second column, which is hypothetical, 22I COLA, 3.4%. The Board of Assessors are recommending that we have a separate warrant article to accept 22I of the Heroes Act, which would automatically apply the cost of living to the exemption for the veterans that qualify, but not accept the second provision of the Heroes Act, because we will use the Acts of 1986, and then you could determine what percentage you want to use. So, if we do that, we go back one more. By accepting 22I, veterans can get the standard exemption plus the COLA, and in theory, plus again, 25%, and everybody else will get 25%, nobody is hurt, the veterans receive a little bit more, the difference is $1,500 based on the map. If you really want to provide veterans, say, 50%, we would do it under the Acts of 1986, but then that means you would do 50% across the board, and you could see in the following sheet how much it would actually cost the town. So, to procedurally, once the Board decides as to what percent you want to support, then we would, at Town Meeting, probably do, because I'm assuming we'll do the COLA adjustment, is that we would do 22I as an acceptance first, and then we would do the Acts of 1986 with the percentage that the Board would like to do. And the reason that I want to do it tonight, because not only is this complicated, but you guys get to study the sheet for two weeks and figure out how much money it should cost the town and how much you're willing to support, if you want to stay at 25 or maximize it from there. Daniela, did I get that correct?
Yeah, that's perfect.
If we do 22I, is there any grant money that comes from the state on that, or that's going to be town-funded?
Town-funded.
Yeah.
And that is built upon. So, if last year's amount was 3.4%, it's going to continually go up from there. We don't take it away and start over the next year, so that does continually get higher.
And then also, Daniela spoke to the Department of Revenue's Attorneys multiple times, and we'll eventually have to vet it by Act Council as well. But the point is, is that if we accept 22I this year, we will not have to vote on it a second time in subsequent meetings unless you choose to change it or rescind it. So, you would do one approval, and then every single year, the assessors will be authorized to provide that additional COLA. So, what Daniela is saying is noteworthy, is that this year is 3.4%, but next year is 3, and the following year is 2, and the following year is 4. That compounds over time. So, right now, you're only seeing a $13 difference, but in three or four years, it could be 100. In 10 years, it could certainly be much more than that. The second thing is that we have been accepting the Acts of 1986 on an annual basis. Turns out, we didn't need to. So, if we're going to change the language just a little bit, once you determine the percentage that you want to support at Town Meeting, we will then have at that warrant article, that percentage. We will accept the Acts of 1986 across the board, and we will not have to vote on it again in the future, again, unless you want to rescind it or you want to amend it.
Any other questions? We've obviously got a couple weeks before we need to make a decision, but we have the experts. I, well.
As a veteran, I know what I'm getting now, and say it's $500, I forget exactly what it is. What would change on that, David, based on, does it go up, down?
Well, we could, well, so, again, we don't know when it'll be approved yet.
Right.
But assuming that what the recommendation of the Board of Assessors is what the Selectmen approve and bring to Town Meeting, and the Town Meeting then approves it, would be 22I. So, that's using your number of 500, I don't know that to be true.
Yeah.
But if it's 500, in this case, it would be times 3.4% or whatever it is going forward.
Okay.
And then, if the exemption percentage of 25% remains, there would be no other changes to your exemption, except the following year, if it goes up 2%, it would be that number plus 2%.
But it would be, it would be your adjusted number, right? So, if it's 500 and it goes to 510 this year, next year's cost of living would be based off the 510, right?
It is not.
No?
The cost of living is going to be based, so you'll see, the standard exemption is 400, then it's only, it's only on the standard exemption it becomes 517. Correct me if I'm wrong, Daniela, the next year, it would be based on the 41360 plus the 25% for your COLA.
Right, yep.
Okay.
It's all a gift.
Right. But again, as Jeff says, I mean, if you look at it, as you start to add it up, you know, ultimately, what people have to understand, that the way the tax rate works is that whether it's 1,500, 13 grand, or all the way up to 36,000, the town receives that money. So, what that means is, is that for the people who are not paying it, because it's rebated through the assessors, it is spread out amongst all the other taxpayers. So, some other taxpayer is paying that difference.
Which I, you know, I'm grateful for your service, grateful for Mike's, you know, there's a balance here to strike.
Of course.
But you should, you should get a break for all you've done, for all of us. You just have to balance that out against.
It's nothing I ever expected, I just became aware of it at one point.
Yep.
So, I think the nice thing is, is that at least in West Bridgewater, we've already been giving a benefit, as Daniela said, not every other town does. So, it looks like what we would be able to do, instead of focusing on, I think it's 22J, instead of focusing on the second portion of the Heroes Act, we focus on the 22I COLA, and then you focus on the Acts of 1986, and just determine which percentage you want to support. And it makes it very simple and fair to everybody across the board, and we would only have to do it at one Town Meeting.
Is there any way to get that excerpt just from 22I? I mean, I can look it up. I'll pull up the Heroes Act and look that up.
Yeah.
22I and 22J, just for myself to get smart on it.
And thank you for breaking this down, because I tried to read it.
Not that smart. That was intense. I was sweating and everything. Thank you.
So, this is the second time it's been explained to me. I think I get it now. So, I appreciate that, thank you.
There's a lot.
Yeah, no, it was a little crazy, but yeah, I get it now.
All right. Thank you. Also, we're tableing this vote. There's no vote. This was informational, we'll vote at the next meeting.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you both for your.
Stick around, we've got some interesting stuff going on, budgets.
Thank you, Daniela.
No? Is that interested? No, sorry, you got other things to do? Is that interested? No, sorry. You got other things to do?
Super. Thank you. Chief, you're next.
We're almost on time.
Next on the agenda is we move into budget hearings and the Police Department and Animal Control are the next two. Good evening, sorry. You, Chief, how are you? So generally, what we're looking for is, you know, a high spot, I guess, you know. Any, any increases, just a quick explanation.
So the majority of our increases obviously are contractual due to bargain raises and steps and whatnot. We also have a younger work population that are now hitting some longevity steps and stepping up. So that, that is probably the most significant increase as far as the salary goes. And some of the, you know, we've gone down a couple because we did, we hired new people versus retiring older people, longer tenured people. And pretty much the, I think the biggest significant increase is going to be the, our operating systems. So if we, if we drop all the way down the bottom, you'll, you'll see service contracts and whatnot. Those aren't avoidable, but those systems that we use are necessities. That's what you're talking about, RMS system, our interoperability with the radios, such, such as those. So those, those are kind of our biggest increases. We went up on some of the uniform equipments because like everything else, gear costs more. We're putting two brand-new kids to the academy right now, and we're hoping to put, you know, moving forward, we're going to retire some people. We have to outfit them, and everything's gone up. So for the most part, it's contractual, you know, whether it be a service contract or just equipment itself. If you have any specific questions.
I'm scanning. I don't, I don't think.
I can take, yeah, I mean, I highlighted some lines if you wanted to touch on it, but.
Nothing.
Yeah, I just. I think more for the people to know what you, what you guys are doing on this is a line that stands out to me is fifty-one ninety-two in-service training. Could you just walk us through some of the training that's, that's currently happening, and then what the plans are next year? If you had a second.
So, no. So our in-service training, obviously, is our required mandatory forty hours of in-service training. That encompasses everything from constitutional law, legal updates, and then depending on what MPTC offers as your mandatory required courses. They do change. The shift has been, again, it being a training agency, they've shifted a lot of that training back to us. For instance, active shooter. And we're an accredited agency, so to maintain our accreditation, we have to go, you know, we have to meet the line and then go above. So with that is not only our ASHA events, we can't just do tabletops. We have to go out and we have to do practicals. That involves in-house defensive tactics, which is now not being offered by MPTC. So again, and I know you, you all feel my pain. They're, they're requiring training, but they're no longer offering it. So we in turn have had to go out and get and train our own guys and do it in-house. That means pulling guys off of shift, and that kind of goes into our in-service training. So pretty much soup to nuts, everything that we do, we have to retrain annually. And that's where I draw that line from.
Yeah, and that's what I wanted to highlight right there, is, is the fact that the support isn't coming necessarily from the state, that we are having to go, this training is required, and we have to.
This is, this is all us. This is all us. This is, and I'm blessed to say that we have some great guys that we have sent to trainee to become in-house trainers. And with that is, for instance, we'll offer active shooter training. I hate, I hate to keep going back to actually. We had ASHA event training to churches, schools, businesses, and that will come from the training I send these guys to go, to go get.
Just another unfunded mandate from the state.
We'll take training now.
You don't have to comment. I'll comment for you. That's it. I got no more questions there.
I got nothing.
Straightforward for me.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Thank you.
Before you go, I got something to say. So, no, you, you started it.
No.
Well, I just wanted to, he was about to leave, so I was holding him in place. Go ahead, Jeff. Kick it off.
Oh, I gotta, I gotta do the other one.
Correct.
Got excited.
You're about to leave. We'll do the other, and then I've got to, but thank you.
All right, so for the other, I've done no changes. We operate with, essentially, we run, and again, it's, it's animal control, but it's really dogs. And we have an in-house person that does a lot of the licensing and the compliance and whatnot. And then we will bring in Jenny Mather as our kenneler. That is up for contract at the end of this year. So I'm basing this pretty much on our existing contract, and she's, she's great. We typically have come under, and right now, she's the best deal in town. So we'll, we'll, we'll see how that comes forward once the bids come in for the, for the new contract.
Your Facebook post often solved that mystery pretty quick with the picture of the dog, too, I've noticed.
Yeah.
We found this guy here, you know, a little alley. Okay, somebody picked him up, so. I wanted to quickly thank you for your academies, if you will, both the Citizen Police Academy and the Senior Academy. We were at the Fire Department for a ceremony earlier tonight, ran an officer church who was headed out to pick up a citizen for the academy for a ride-along tonight. But it's just fantastic programs, fantastic outreach, and just want to say thanks.
No, I appreciate it, and I, I'll take the credit because it's my position, but it's, it's my people. We have awesome people, and they donate their time to do it because they want to do it and they care about it. So I appreciate that very much.
You got Mo shaking his head and saying yes behind you.
Are those classes on Wednesday, though?
Most my, most my date on Tuesday morning.
Yeah, see, I wanted to do it, but the classes are on Wednesday, and I'm like, every other Wednesday, I'm here.
I happen to know somebody.
Yeah.
I happen to know somebody. We may be able to move the date for next fall.
Marcy's probably ridden in a police car.
I really, what'd you say?
I think you might have ridden in a police car once or twice. I'll stop.
I've seen the inside, maybe. But I would really like to attend the academy. I just can't make Wednesdays. I'm just saying.
Chief, excellent. Your entire department, I think we're coming up on a year. You've been in seat now?
Just passed, yeah.
Yeah, just passed a year. I, I think you're doing a phenomenal job. The residents are all saying you're doing a phenomenal job. Every police officer has a, usually has a smile on their face, usually because I'm not on the wrong side of doing something wrong. But whenever I see them, they're cheerful, and they're happy to be part of your, your team. So I'm very proud of, you should be very proud of the culture that you've built in that, in that department. I know that you are, and it's, it's well-known throughout the town, so thank you for that.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
A second bite, yeah. We are, we are so lucky with our police and fire in this town. I mean, anytime I see a firefighter or a police officer in this town, they're talking to somebody. They're, they're involved in the community, and I love it. I really do, so thank you.
Yep.
Very, very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Good leadership.
Run out the door on all the praise.
I am. I'm gonna, I'm gonna call.
Leave on a high note.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim. Cheryl, Community Preservation Committee. How are you?
I'm good. How are you guys?
Good, thank you.
Hopefully you have my memo that I.
We do. It's in the chatroom, and it's also on the screen.
Oh, perfect. So we have one project that we're going to review tomorrow night, and it's actually for five thousand. I mean, it's a continuation of the veterans to identify, I think they're making a database of all of the veteran stones in town, and then they'll affix them with plaques. And as I usually mention, we don't really have any specific numbers because it changes all the time, but I did give you an idea of the balances that are in the buckets right now based on what's coming in this year from the state and from collections.
How come, it just never seems, and obviously, past YAA, boosters, all that, so I always look at open space first. How come there's just never that much there?
In the past, open space has usually been the one that has spent the most money.
Okay.
So however, Kathy's wonderful in town. However, she figures it.
I'm not doubting what it is. I just, I was wondering.
Yep, they're the most, and that's why housing has, you know, a lot of money because they haven't done a lot of projects. So, and, you know, this is the buckets that I usually do at town meeting. So this is what they have. It's not the actual balance of the fund, but it's what they have specifically to, that's geared towards those groups, so.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
No.
I have none. Thank you for all you do with us. Greatly appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Numbers will drive you nuts, so thank you so much. Timing is everything.
Look at that.
You can, you can come right to the hot seat if you want.
Oh, we're ready to go?
Just, just, yep. Want anyone else?
You could not have planned that better.
Perfect.
Nine minutes ahead of schedule.
Oh, we like it. Let's keep it that way, right? I know you just sat down whenever you were.
Yeah, no worries, yeah. Everyone has a presentation, I believe, or?
We do.
Awesome, great.
So maybe just introduce yourself.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. So my name's Mark Morris, Assistant Superintendent Finance over at Southeastern Regional. He had to present our FY twenty-six budget that was approved on February twenty-fifth by the school committee. So on the first page, you can see our foundation budget is thirty-eight million, seven thirty-four, five seventy-five. That's made up of state aid of twenty-four million, five forty-six, three ninety-two, and local assessments of fourteen million, one eighty-eight, one eighty-three. Right below that is transportation. That's a cost of two million, three thirty-two, eight hundred, made up of one million, five five-three, seven eighty-seven of state aid, and seven seventy-nine, oh thirteen of local assessments. The important part to understand there is regional transportation is supposed to be funded at a hundred percent by the state when funds are available. Since I've been in this position, I've never seen it funded at a hundred percent. I've seen it as high as eighty-seven, eighty-eight, as low as fifteen. So it's important that you do see legislatures, senators, reps, let them know that this is important to the town. Because if this gets funded a hundred percent, then that local assessment piece would be zero. So there'd be zero cost out to the towns. We have our three oh six, three seventy-five for our capital improvements, our MSBA project that we did back in two thousand and ten or eleven, I think now. It's, it's kind of a blur. But at that point, we take one hundred ninety-two thousand from our local assessments, and then one hundred fourteen thousand, three seventy-five is coming this year from our adult ed receipts from our STI program, adult program revenue. We're taking that to make up our payment of three oh six, three seventy-five, giving us a budget of forty-one million, three seventy-three, seven fifty. So that's up five point three percent from last year. And then if you turn the page, our enrollment, you can see is up twenty-five students from FY twenty-five to FY twenty-six. And to the town of West Bridgewater, there's an increase of, is it three, three students from seventy-five to seventy-eight. And the town of West Bridgewater makes up three point nine percent of, I'm sorry, four point six percent of our total enrollment, a three point nine percent change from FY twenty-five to FY twenty-six.
Just enrollment, right?
Enrollment, yeah, correct. Next page, obviously, you know, the important piece, we know what's our assessment. So for the town of West Bridgewater in FY twenty-six, we're looking at one million, one twenty-five, five fourteen, an increase of one hundred seventeen thousand, two oh six from FY twenty-five. That's made up of the contribution, net bond payment, transportation, and capital costs.
So I know David had sent an email your way.
Yeah, definitely.
Earlier. And I guess just on the percentages while we're at it, right, it's, it looks like it's a twelve percent increase. We had a fifteen percent increase last year. But we're, we're a smaller piece. You know, we're looking at, I guess we're looking at five point three percent increase. Our enrollment goes up three point nine, and our assessment's gone up twelve percent, so.
Correct. So unfortunately, there's no direct correlation with all of those. There are multiple variables that go into the chapter seventy formula, and the chapter seventy formula is the same for the vocational, the regional school, as it is for your own comprehensive school. If you want to skip ahead a few pages, we can kind of go over that, some of that now. It'll be the page that says FY twenty-six, chapter seventy, determination of city and town, right there. So some of the key variables or factors that go into the, the actual assessment is going to be enrollment, obviously. Valuation, if you see here, so equalized valuation, so property valuations in town, and also income in the town. So the state is saying here that your target share, the target share of West Bridgewater for education, so this is total education, not just the vocational, this is all your, so I presume you have the Aggie as well? So the Aggie, town schools, and vocational school should be sixty-six point six percent. They're saying you're at fifty-eight point five zero. So they're saying that you're below target by eight point one six percent. So they're saying that the town can afford sixty-six point six-six percent of the education cost, but you're only kicking in fifty-eight point five right now, and you're below by eight point one six. And then if you look down a little further, if you're, if there is a shortfall, there's an additional two percent, I don't want to say assessment, but they, they, they don't want an additional two percent for being below target to catch you up to where you should be. That's what the town's saying. So basically, in the chapter seventy formula, they determine what the town or the cities can afford to pay for education. I'd like to reiterate as well with us at Southeastern Regional, we're at net school spending, so we're at the minimum. We're spending at what's required for us to spend. So if you look at our, and I don't think, actually, I didn't add this, but I did bring it with me just in case. I can reach a copy. Thank you. Yeah, sure. I'm sorry, I was.
No, no, we have.
I didn't say, I'm sorry.
Is, which one do you want to show, Mark? Do you want to do this one?
I think it's there.
Oh, you do have it, okay. So, I'm sorry, I thought you didn't have it. So this is the, you can show Southeastern's.
So.
So you can see, so the dotted line is our required net school spending, what the state says we have to spend in education. The solid line is what we spend. And you can see our line overlaps one over the other. So we're, we're spending what the state is asking, not asking, but saying that we're, that we're supposed to spend per student for education. So when I come to you with the assessment, it's, I hope you, it's, it's the required minimum that we're at, that what the state is saying that we have to spend for education. You know, so even if I said, you know, hey, I'm, I feel really nice today, I'm going to say you don't have to pay as much, the state still says you have to pay the minimum, and that's what we're asking for. So when we build our budget in, in school, we start back in November. We take, you know, we sit down with every department, every teacher, we go through all the requests. The school committee reviews the requests, and then once the governor's numbers come out, we look at the amount of those requests versus what the required minimum is. And then that's when we start to look, making, making some cuts to get to that number. So, you know, I, I do want you to understand that we, we understand this is important to the towns, all eight towns we service and the city of Brockton. We do take pride in keeping ourselves at net school spending minimums, but we do make some difficult choices and decisions throughout the years to keep us there. Again, health costs are rising. We're negotiating a new three-year contract. You know, everything's more expensive, you know, inflation, everything's getting to cost more. And at a vocational school with big-ticket items such as, you know, automotive lifts, you know, band saws, table saws, you know, CNC routers. These things, you know, they're hundred thousand dollar machines that we have to purchase, so it, it does make it more difficult for us. But we do look for opportunities through grants whenever we can to fund those, those items that we have. And we also do use our excess and deficiency account to fund some of those items throughout the year so that we don't have to come back to the town and ask for more money or our sending communities.
You, you brought it up, so I'm going to ask. You said excess and deficiency accounts.
Yes.
And, and please don't get me wrong, don't, don't take any of the questions for not being appreciative of what's.
No, no, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
So please, it's just questions.
Definitely.
So please, don't be offended or upset. It's just questions. You said excess and deficiencies. Where were we last year when it came, when it, as a school in general? Do you have an idea as to where?
So our E D was just certified. I don't know, I, I don't know if Dave received a copy. Yeah, one point five million was just certified. So under the prevy of the state, the school committee can keep up to five percent of their total budget in an excess and deficiency account. We do have some big-ticket items coming up, so if you recall, about two thousand and ten, eleven, we did our MSBA renovation expansion project. Gym floor is getting to the point where it needs to be replaced. A gym floor.
Wood?
No, no, rubber.
Not going to go wood?
No, not going to go wood. Unfortunately, because we're on wetlands and with the moisture, it's been recommended to us not to, to use the wood product. You know, we would have loved to. I thought Dr. would have loved wood, but it just doesn't make sense for us.
No, we just, we played their bunch.
Yeah.
Pup and knees, pup and knees on the rubber.
And then also our artificial turf field is going on fifteen years old, and we're looking at the point now, it's, it's going to get to the point where that needs to be replaced. Our parking lots in need of being repaved as well. So again, these are all big-ticket items. So by having the excess and deficiency, it helps us not have to come back to the towns and ask for additional assessments and things of that nature.
So you're using that fund pretty much like capital projects.
That's what we try to keep it for. Things unforeseen, perhaps the roof, the boilers for sale, that's what we try to keep that for.
No, I'm good. I, I just have to say, I, I, I'm not thrilled that the state has told us that because, you know, there's more money in the town, or they think there's more money in the town, that we have to pay more, but it is what it is. But I do love the school. I absolutely love your school. I love your students. I love your programs. I love everything. Every time I've ever been to the school, I'm so impressed with the students.
If you haven't been there, I'd love to have you over.
So impressed.
If you have been there, come back again. We'd love to have you back, show you what's going on. We have a STEM addition going on right now, and that was funded through a four million dollar STEM capital grant. So we have that as we speak in place. Yeah, we take pride in what we do. The kids take pride in what they do. Even they all come from eight different towns in the city. They're really one, right? And again, and a lot of it's just an extension of West Bridgewater, East Bridgewater, Sharon. We try to be an extension of the towns and try to be, you know, a good partner to, for what we can.
Just out of curiosity, there, I've just heard different conflicting things. You have dual enrollment and early college. Is one of them going away?
So the early college high school is going away. So as you know, Massasoit's free.
Yeah.
Now, so not that we don't see, but we don't feel it's a good buy. The first year, once you graduate. once you graduate, you have to have, you have, it is one year that separates them. So we don't think it's, it's a good use of the money to pay for early college high school. We have the students wait one year, they're going to have that for free. So the students that are in it now, we will take them through the, through they graduate, but we will not be offering any new students next year.
Okay, but you'll still have the dual enrollment.
The dual enrollment, yeah.
Yep, good.
David, anything? All right. I echo what, what our other board members have said. I've been there a few times.
Awesome.
There for some of your accreditation stuff and some other things. Fantastic school, doing wonders. I've got some of my son's friends have, have gone through, and they're out in the real world, and wouldn't say they live in large, but they're, they're living good, and they're working, and, you know, they love their trade, and, and, and they're good at it, and I think, you know, you guys provide a great foundation for that.
And again, and I'm not disagreeing or agreeing, but, you know, the foundation, maybe time to, you know, look at the foundation budget, the chapter seventy budget. So again, and it's important, if you see a selectmen, you let them know, because they're the ones that can make that really happen, right? They're the ones that can make that change. You know, I forgot how many, I, I think over, I don't want to say, three quarters of schools this year were held harmless. So that, that's telling us that maybe there's something that needs to be looked at again, right? It was back in ninety-three when it was, was looked at during ed reform. Doesn't mean it's, you know, once they fix it, doesn't mean it's going to be good forever. Maybe it's that time where we start looking at, you know, the state starts to look at that, and, and if we can help you with that, let us know, but that's, you know, at this point, you know. I wish I had better news, but the good news is, enrollment's up from West Bridgewater, the kids are happy, I think they're doing well, and hopefully, you know, they come back into town and.
Do, do our, so our students, they already know they're going there next year?
So letters are going out as we speak. So, you know, acceptance letters. We had over twelve hundred applicants for four hundred and twenty spots.
I love that.
Yeah, so.
And Jeff, there is one thing I do want to say. Mark really does a nice job. Holly does an excellent job. And to everybody out there, if you want to get a really good lunch, you should go over to Southeastern, because they do, and they do a fantastic job. And not, and obviously, the students there also get real-world experience, but you get a really good lunch at the same time. So again, just to, they do a fantastic job.
Thank you, David.
Anything else? Appreciate your time.
No, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we'll be here tomorrow for the, for the FinCon.
You will, we'll be downstairs.
All right.
He's going to be asking the tough questions tomorrow.
All right, all right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
All right, let's, is the school, school's in the hallway? Okay. Wait, we'll, we'll take a second, stretch.
Yep.
Hello, hello, hello.
You can all just sign in. You can.
Anybody warm? It's warm.
Nope, finally warm. Finally, just got warm. Thank you for asking.
All right, good evening, everyone. We'll give you a second to settle in.
Sign in.
Settle in, sign in. You are, you are up on the clock, if you will.
All right.
So we are ready for you when you're ready for us.
Thank you.
But get, feel free to get organized and whatever else you need. Well.
All right, I think we're ready. Thank you, again, for this opportunity. We're going to present a few slides, and then we'll answer, obviously, any questions that you may have for us. Starting out by thanking you. The first slide really, well, that's what will show you some things we've added over the years, and those positions have been very impactful for us. Things like our school adjustment counselors, one at the elementary, one at the middle, senior high school, hard-time school psychologists at the high school. We've added classroom teachers to right-size up depending on our enrollment, getting from four to five. We used to have the bubble of five, and now we got to almost all five, and now we're looking at enrollment again. A big add for us has been our sub-separate programs. We've established sub-separate programs at each of the elementary schools. There's been a cost associated with it in terms of staffing, but the real benefit to us and the town has been keeping kids in district. We've been able to keep more kids in district, which is excellent. Related services, our OTPT speech and language, we've added those over the years due to the needs of our students, who've been able to service our kids more effectively. And our multilingual learner staff, we've increased over the years due to the increased enrollment of our ML students over the years, and we've developed a real thriving ML family engagement program, which has helped the entire community. Where we're at in terms of special education, this is a pretty consistent slide for us, updated a little bit, but again, these placements are for our students who have the highest needs and are properly placed due to their IEP and the team decision. But again, about one percent of our student population takes up about thirteen percent of our budget, and that's very normal in most school districts. And one of the things we're seeing consistently is transportation cost range anywhere from thirty to potentially eighty thousand, or more, or more per student, depending on where they're going and the, you know, availability of transportation. We also have varied placements for our students, some are in public schools, some are collaboratives, and some are in private programs. What we're seeing again, and this happened a couple of years ago when OSD increased by fourteen percent, there is one program in particular we've reached out to that the increase for this year is thirty-three point four percent, going from a hundred and twenty thousand to over a hundred and sixty thousand. So I've reached out to the director, I've reached out to OSD to find out what's going on, because that's, you know, a cost, tremendous increase for our budget. So hopefully, we'll get some information back. We do have students who leave the program, we have students who age out, we have students who move out of town, but we also have students who change placements. They may go from a day program to a residential program. Increased cost of tuition, decreased cost of transportation. But again, very fluctuating number for us year to year. Next one shows just information about school choice. The graph will show you information historically where we've been in terms of our numbers. The number, the pinkish, dark pink number of two fifty is what we budgeted last year. Currently, we enroll two hundred and twenty-eight school choice students. So we did incur a bit of a deficit this year with our numbers. We are anticipating numbers to go down, although this year we are going to budget two thirty. That's in the school contributions. We're confident we can get to that. We have thirty graduating seniors, we have more room than we have at the middle, senior high school, we have room in grade eight, and potentially for some siblings at the elementary, but once again, we're very cautious on adding at the elementary level. In terms of just financial impact, I think this is huge in terms of our budget. We went from over one point five billion, and we're projecting, I don't think it's too conservative to decrease, you know, over seven hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars over the eight years, which again, decreases our school contribution, which we add into the budget.
No, I, we've talked about this in the past, I, I agree, like, with the town population increasing and, you know, trying to, trying to walk that tightrope of having enough space for our residents and maximizing the other space.
Exactly. And, and the reality is, right now, we don't see that increase, but we do believe it's coming. And our belief is we could add students right now to elementary level, but I'm concerned about next year, and the year after, and the year after. We add five students through natural growth, we're going to be overcrowded in those grade levels. Even with five, and the reality is, we can't go to six classrooms at elementary, we don't have the space for that.
No, I mean, you're, you're aware, I mean, we've got, we've got some pockets that are being built, we've got an MBTA discussion, a, a town meeting.
Right.
You know, there's a potential for the town population to increase quickly.
Absolutely.
So I think that's the right approach.
Yeah, again, we'll be cautious in that. Next, it just shows some of our school contributions. We're happy that this is our highest amount of school contributions during my time, and it may be the highest we've ever had. And our school contributions represent thirteen percent of our total school budget. We definitely have a decrease in our school choice and in our special education grants. Part of that's being cautious, some of them are federal grants, and we want to be cautious that in case they aren't fully funded. And we've seen an increase in circuit breaker in our revolving accounts. Those accounts, circuit breaker is supposed to be funded seventy-five percent over the threshold. We hope it gets there, there's legislation that's supported by the MASSS to get to ninety percent, and that's really what we need to cover those costs. And again, this is not a unique issue for West Bridgewater, it's every city and town have these issues. But we hope to continue to have our school contributions be as high as we can, because we know that then the decrease is the amount the town has to support. So our major budget concerns this year, and we just want to highlight that, we'll do it a little bit later as well, but is school choice. Again, we are reducing by twenty students from the two fifty down to the two thirty, which creates a hundred thousand dollar deficit, or decrease in our school contributions, and potential, again, reducing in the future. The biggest unexpected realization this year for us was our agricultural school, students who applied there. And the enrollment and the acceptance are coming, so I got a few of them today, knowing who was accepted into the programs. But we are projecting ten students, ten additional students apply to Bristol or Norfolk Aggie. Currently, we have six students attending Norfolk Aggie, none to Bristol. One who graduates, we'll be at five next year, but we're sort of budgeting for fifteen. And we'll talk a little bit about the costs in a second.
Hold on, before you go any further.
Sure.
Do we have ten, we're, we're going to get ten seats in that school, or is this, what we, what's projected is?
It's projected for students who have applied.
So this is just applications, they haven't necessarily been accepted?
Correct.
Okay.
Or decided that they want to attend.
Okay. But I also understand, I'm watching your meeting, that, I think Kathy, you said that everybody gets sent.
Yeah.
And you'll see why. There's a, there's a big cost to, to the city and towns. It's a, it's a massive increase for us. And again, I want to be clear that this is a placement for students who want to go there, and that's, could we support that? We support students attending this program because they're choosing to go there. So it's like a Southeastern, it's, you know, it, it works best for them and their families. But this does account, it's a three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar increase over last year, which is about an average, I'll show you the three-year average in a second, which is one point eight four percent of our overall increase is due to this bump in applications. Also, right now, we do, required by state law to provide transportation, we have a collaborative transportation group to Norfolk Aggie, if students go to Bristol Aggie, we've budgeted an amount of money, thirty thousand dollars, to collaborate with other communities, and hopefully, we can get that at that rate or, or less. But it's something we've never had in the budget before, because it's been quite a few years before, since we've had a student go to Bristol.
Well, we have a final number before, like, we, two weeks from now?
No, unfortunately not. The enrollments, the rolling enrollments, and some of these students have applied off to Southeastern, and we've been notified that some of them, if they get into Southeastern, they'll probably choose Southeastern over, over the agricultural schools. So.
I just, you know where I'm going.
I would, I would love, I would absolutely love to, because it would be a huge impact on us, and we certainly could have been gambled a little bit and said, maybe only eight would go, but we, we wanted to be realistic. The other reality is, they can apply up until April first, and we have to, once by April first, and they're a resident, we have to approve the application. After April first, we can deny it. So this number could grow. It hasn't grown in the past, you know, three or four weeks, but it conceivably could grow. Next, we have, this just shows again, quickly, the, how we've increased this year compared to the last three fiscal years, that's the actual amounts of the tuition only, and then you can see the costs associated with Norfolk Aggie tuition, Bristol Aggie tuition, and Norfolk does charge an additional amount if they are on a special location at land. So it's, it's a lot, Bristol doesn't do that, but you add that up plus the thirty thousand, and that's where we get to our three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar increase. The, just for point of reference, if you are in county, district, it's about five thousand, I think.
Tuition.
For tuition.
So, Altamont County, cities and towns are charged this amount. All right. So I just want to highlight some of the key points before we get to the actual numbers, so there are no new positions in this budget. This budget maintains four kindergarten classrooms, we've looked at the census data, we're confident, with fingers crossed, that we'll be around where we are this year with four classrooms. Right now, we're seventy-nine students in kindergarten, which is a, a low number for us, so we hope to maintain that, and we're going to maintain four first-grade classrooms. So we are reducing one teacher out of the budget for that. We're planning to right-size, we're going to look, and we put it into this budget to right-size another, one teacher reduction, depending on grades. Now, this will cause some concerns with class size. The ones we're looking at are ninety-four to ninety-nine, depending on grade level, and there are different factors that go into it depending on the grade level, so we know that it may have class sizes twenty-four to twenty-seven, because you're going to want your inclusion classes to be smaller to start, so if students move in, they have a place to go, and it's not already overcrowded. In the future, though, and I just want to put it out there, that we do believe we're going to have to right-size back from four to five. When the enrollment increases in kindergarten, and we have ninety to a hundred, we don't want to be putting twenty-five kindergarteners in a class, which is not best for our kids. And again, the budget does include the reduction of twenty students for school choice and the agricultural increase. This just shows where the major areas, four major areas in terms of the increase, you can see the dollar amount, the percent of the total budget, and then the percent of the increase, like all, or most, you know, school budgets personnel, so you're going to find most of that increase is due to step, track, and cola raises. Again, thirty-two percent of our increase is our agricultural tuition and transportation. We have the school choice decrease, and then the net other expenses are about point seven of the increase. So the total increase for FY twenty-five right now is approved by the school committee is five point eight three percent. And then, two more slides, I think. So this just shows the entire breakdown, so the total school budget would be twenty-one million minus our school contributions, gives us our budget amount minus our FY twenty-five approved appropriation. But then, you know, importantly, we really want to show you, and again, it's, it's a reality, but we don't just include in our budget, but I think it's just important to show, if you back, if we were able to bring in two hundred and fifty students, we increase that amount, then the increase would only be at five point two six percent, and if we had average agricultural interest this year, we'd be at three point four two percent. Again, we know it's part of our entire budget, but we just wanted to show that information. And this just shows, again, we appreciate what the town has supported at the schools in the past. We're very, very fortunate that, you know, seven point seven eight percent, six point nine three percent, we're looking at five point eight three percent. It was our goal and intention to be at five or, or below five, while still meeting the needs of all of our students and staff. Again, some factors kind of came into play that were, we believe somewhat out of our control, but you can see where it could have been, and, you know, again, hoping to move in that direction in the future.
Yeah, I mean, on the budget, I mean, I noticed significant increases too in special education, which again, is, is also, I think, to a certain extent, out of your control.
Yes.
And it's not a, it's not a giant increase, you know, if you remove that, remove Aggie, it's not that much. I guess, in watching your meeting, I watched it last night, I know it wasn't last night, but as I said last night, I figured it's best to, you know. but as I say, last night, I figured it's best to, you know-
Keep it fresh.
Keep it close to this meeting, for better, for worse, well, you guys can decide.
Yeah.
Um, but I guess one of the things that, that I'm a little, not stuck on, but I guess wanna change on, is I know the original budget had one less person in it than what, than what you guys approved. And, and for me, like hypothetically, if, um, you know, if David came to us, and, and again, hypothetically, said we, we don't need another person in the, I don't know, the building department's right behind us, again, hypothetical, um, I would trust his judgment and take his word, and, um, he referred to Kathy as an expert-
Yes, we do, we do.
-in the conversation last night, so I guess my challenge to you is-
Why do we have to?
Why are you overriding the people that, that manage it on a daily basis?
So, we discussed it as a committee, and the consideration of what would need to be cut would directly impact the elementary, it would directly impact their specials, it would drop them from five specials to four. And where we already have taken their art room, their STEM room-
Can you define specials, I'm sorry?
Oh yeah, so it's, um, art, music, phys ed, health, and STEM.
Okay.
Those are the five.
I, I knew like three of those, so thank you.
Yeah, so, where, they're, all of the specials are currently on cards, and the class sizes are what they are. And every time we look at where are we gonna take money from, it's elementary, it's elementary. Um, so we went back and forth for a long time, and I spoke with both Mark and Kathy over this, and they pushed back on us, and said, you know, we, we really want to be below this number. And we appreciate that, and we see that, but at the same time, I can't, because we have, just because we have ten kids applying, to go to a school that spends twenty-nine thousand dollars a year for their education, it's not right to me to take away from our kids in district. And so, that was the big issue for me, and for others on the committee, that it's just not fair to the kids.
And I'll also say that whether it's specialists, or if it's decreasing from five core teachers to four, it, it's, and we know it's happening in the district, you know, there's overrides, we know that, you know, massive cuts. And we, again, we're very fortunate that that has not happened here in West Bridgewater, and that's through good planning, I believe. But, you know, I don't wanna be the district, is, you know, into the high twenties, uh, for, you know, elementary classrooms, or reducing specialists, uh, to bare minimum, just so the teachers will get their prep time and, and losing some exposure. And I think the other reality is, we're pretty confident we'll have to add them back again in the future. And I, I'd also don't wanna create too much of a, you know, a difference between where we need, where we go, and where we need to add, just due to the class sizes.
Yeah, and I guess that's, we share the same concern, right, you talked about us, you know, being on, on solid financial footing, which I credit both, I mean, you guys were significant half of the budget, right, just as a round number. And David, obviously, managing the other half. Um, but a five percent increase after a seven percent increase, after, almost after an eight percent, almost after a seven, while the increase has gone down, the dollars are, are still significant because of those other two increases, right? So we're still, we're still at a million dollars, which some of those others were a million, million-two. So, um, while the percentage has gone down, the, the dollars haven't necessarily gone down. And this will probably be the second year in a row where we're gonna use free cash just to balance our budget. And that is a dangerous place to be, because that, that, if you will, that plank isn't, isn't solid, and it's not necessarily guaranteed to be there next year. Um, so we're, I, I, I don't wanna think this way, but there's a piece of me that thinks that we're walking towards overrides, um, with budgets that are collectively, you know, as large as what they are. Um, and David's, again, I think he's done a fantastic job keeping, keeping us away from that. Um, but it's getting harder and harder to do that, so, I don't, I don't profess to have an answer. Um, but, well, well, I'm happy to see the decrease with the other increases, the, the, the dollars, kinda the same.
Truth be told, I asked Kathy to get to nine-nine-nine. I tried, I tried, really, I-
In that same vein, with not wanting to, um, you know, punish the in-district students because of the out-of, out-of-district placement students, um, as a board, we represent the entire town, right? So like, the residents that don't have children, and the residents who live on a fixed income and everything too. So when you come before us with large increases, again, the percentage is lower, the increase is still relatively the same, dollar-wise. Um, we, we have to take into account everybody in town, because everybody's taxes go up. So, I understand that we don't wanna punish in-district for the out-of-district placements, but we also don't wanna punish the rest of our residents either with higher taxes, because of the student, you know, not because of the students, I have children, I love my children, I love everybody's children, but, you know, we, we, as a board, I think, always have to be considering every resident in town. So that, that's also, also always a concern.
So theoretically, six students go to Aggie, Aggie, sorry, Portsmouth, Aggie, I forgot. Um, what do we do, like, what, those, so now you've got a, you've got a surplus, but maybe not as, I know Kathy, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I wish we'd have a surplus, if that happens, you know, we would love to be able to contribute to free cash at the end of the year. My concern and the risks that I see in this budget are the federal funding, which is totally up in the air, and also, I've used a significant amount of circuit breaker funding, um, contingent on us receiving, we received about seven hundred thousand dollars in circuit breaker last year from the state, which was the most we've ever received. You know, I'm counting on receiving that much this year, in order, this coming year, in order to fund this budget. We did have some reserve in circuit breaker, which we, um, you know, it's a good place to build up a little in case we get several unplanned out-of-district students. But I have used about eight hundred and twenty thousand of circuit breaker in this budget. And, you know, if we, a conservative number of circuit breaker money to get this year for next year would be six hundred thousand. So, two things go into play there, I am hoping to have enough left over from this current year's circuit breaker to fund two hundred and twenty thousand of the contribution that I put in the budget for next year, um, you know, predicated on the fact that we get that amount.
And we're, we're not exactly in clarity on federal funds and-
And, and these are state, luckily, so I think we have more.
But I think my point is, like, this, we are, we are, you know, we continue to poke the president in the eye for better, for worse, right? Not, not trying to put politics into this, but that's not gonna do Massachusetts any favor with federal funds.
Right.
So, the state is gonna have a deficit to make up, and I, you know, I, I feel like we're all gonna suffer from that perspective as we move forward, so.
So hopefully we-
Revolving accounts similar, can I explain how you-
Yeah, well, the revolving accounts are state funds going there, it's just not the federal grants. Circuit breaker is not, is a revolving account. So we can save some money in there, year to year, kind of like your stabilization, I wish it was that big. Um, but we did have a little money in there this year to move forward, and apply it to next year's budget.
Also, I should've started with this, but I wanna thank you guys for, we had, we had some budget meetings throughout the year, um, which makes some of this, you know, none of this is necessarily a giant surprise, if you will, so, thank you for having those.
Um, well, I got questions, and, and like you just started to say, thank you guys, cause I know that this took some time to put together. Um, thank you for all you guys doing for our kids throughout the year. Um, could you go back to slide sixty-four for me, please? Alright, on slide sixty-four here, we're talking about transportation.
Yes.
Right, now, how much of this transportation is put into your bu, into that budget? Cause as I look at this, the left and right lateral limit is insane, you know what I mean? So where do you put the pin, where, 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 where in your budget is the, is the pin put in, in, in on this needle? Like, is it more towards the, the, the higher end of it, or where, where does it fall?
So, we'll, we'll budget for trans, design of transportation specifically, so we will, you know, Kathy Marvel, Special Director, will, really, it's-
By student.
It's by student, it's by, it's by, you know, trying to find, you try to find collaborative, cause they tend to have the best rates, but then you're often looking at transportation companies, and depending on routes, sometimes you can combine routes, and sometimes you're singular, and sometimes you may be spending, you know, eighty thousand dollars to drive a student, you know, down, you know, down towards the Cape or something like that. So, we will put a number with each student that we feel is very reasonable and attainable.
Yeah, but as I, as I'm looking at this, right, and I, and I'm just taking each line, line by line, right? In that first one, there's a ten thousand dollar difference just i- in that line.
It's the tuition.
Tuition, so, so those are tuitions only.
Okay.
So that, yeah, so public school tuition, if we do send students to East Bridgewater, maybe have a program, or Bridgewater Rainham, they may vary a little bit in cost, year to year. Same thing with collaborative, Reed's Collaborative, North River, um, depending on the program, and depending on the student and the age, there'll be a difference in cost. And then, the real X-factor gets to the non-public, private schools. So, we do know tuitions at a time, um, they'll send out their rates, so we can budget pretty exactly for those. It's just the ones that we don't know, the ones that potentially move into town, that never set foot in any of our schools, but need to continue a placement. So, the numbers that are there are ranges, but we have exact numbers for each student. We have a spreadsheet of students, and we list transportation, tuition, and E S Y, the extended school.
And I say this because we're having a, a, a meeting about budget and finances, but those variables are really pretty excessive. They're wild, you know, it's wild, and, and I, I, personally, I'd like to just see, and I got, I got kids, as you all know, I got kids in the school system. One now, and then kindergarten or, wow, I, I expect a lot of phone calls from the school, and I'm prepared- Coming in next year, I'm prepared for the phone calls from the school. Um, but at the same time, I'm like, we, we, we have to, we have to figure out where we're gonna save money on budgets.
So we, I mean, again, we've accounted for all that within the ranges, within our, our line items, so they're all there. That's just to show the variability, um, in the cost, eventually.
Right, and then, if you'd skip to slide seventy? When does kindergarten, um, enrollment stop? Because I know that, right, so, uh, to, to, I mean, we're trying to figure out class sizes right now.
Right.
Um, and I know that, I, I'm guilty, I just, I, I think we just did the kindergartner on this week.
It's amazing, I don't think, but I think we're soon to be starting registration.
Alright, so-
We have the, we have the census numbers, which are a predictor.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, but it's when he moves into town.
They're in, yes.
Same thing with our preschool program, if they move in, we reintegrated preschool program. If they're three years old and they age in, and they live in town, they're in. So we'll look at that number, again, these were fingers crossed moments. We said, alright, we're gonna go with four last, this current year, because the numbers were low, and we were at seventy-eight, and then we went to seventy-nine, we've been up to eighty, we've been down, down to seventy-nine. So, it's a, it's a good number for us, but I'll be honest, if we get up to a hundred kids, then we've gotta decide on what's best for kids.
Do we make a point? That was part of, and I think it's important, I wanted to maintain the specialists in elementary schools, but I also wanted there to be some sort of a safety net, if enrollment in kindergarten is higher than anticipated, if you've already cut the specialist preemptively, then what do you cut at the beginning of school year to get the fifth classroom?
You know, which was kind of my point in, in saying that, um, kinda have no idea, and it's, it's kind of a bubble that we don't know, and-
Correct.
And worry about the burst. Um, and then, on slide six, I'm sorry, Christine, you're going, I'm all over the place, I'm sorry. Slide number sixty-three, um, and I know there's no increases on here, but could you please go down and break down what is required by state, um, and then what are like, kinda nice to have? And I have a feeling, I know the answer to this, but I just kinda wanna hear it.
Sure, alright, I mean, our adjustment countses are not required, but our testing is for our school psychologists, who does predominantly all the testing at the Mitchell City High School. Classroom teachers are based on numbers, uh, sub-separate programs, students, we're trying to keep them in district as much as possible, um, meeting their needs, related services are required, uh, by their I E P, so O T, P T, A P E, uh, speech and language. And we are required by the state to provide a certain amount of minutes, depending on how our M L students, uh, score on their, uh, entrance, um, data. So we have to provide up to ninety minutes a day for our M L students.
And just to actually make a point, I know you said, Mark, that the school adjustment counselors are not required, but when we look at the sub-separate programs and the school adjustment counselors, certainly, those are, are places that we could cut. But when a student is in crisis, the school adjustment counselor is the one that is helping that student. And when a student gets to the point where they can no longer be educated in the school, because we don't have the mental health staff, that number goes down to the out-of-district line. So, where it's not required, it is proactive, so that we are not sending kids out of district before we need to, really.
And we have a school psychologist at the Roseville and at Howard, but they do a lot of our testing, they see kids, they see groups, they see kids in crisis, and we have one adjust, school adjustment counselor for the whole elementary. So that's for the, really, the three schools.
What testing?
What, um, testing for I E Ps.
Okay, alright, that's what I thought, okay, I just wanted to make sure, make sure we're on the same page, okay.
Thank you, and I'm not trying to be difficult by asking questions.
We appreciate it, we appreciate it.
We're welcome with questions, because it's, it's helpful for us to, you know, answer them.
Do we have free pre-K?
No, it's free for the integrated students.
No, they do pay for the pre-K, okay.
For the playpals have to pay.
I'm sorry, one more time?
The playpals, the students who come in who are not I E Ps.
Okay, alright, okay.
And we're readjusting that for next year to create more full-day options, because they surveyed the parents, and that's what they want. It's better for them, daycare, and childcare, so forth.
So if we adjust that next year, is it, is that a break-even proposition or not?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're pretty much adding, um, keeping, I think we're actually gonna be able to add a few more students, and the cost will go up a little bit, in terms of the, more kids in full day.
So, okay, just question.
It doesn't break, it doesn't break even.
No, no, it doesn't break even for the cost, it breaks even, it won't change from one year to the next.
It pays for one, um, one of the full-time preschool teachers, the, the tuitions.
But by adding more, you're adding more cost, though? Students, full-time?
No, we're not adding teachers.
We haven't added any teachers, we're just rearranging, we're reducing some of the halftime and two-and-a-half hour programs to be full day, and more days a week, which cost more.
So, and our preschool classrooms are limited to fifteen students, and you have to have a balance, you have to have more regular ed than special ed. So we have to have a balance, and we've gone from two preschool teachers to two and a half, up to three, um, a couple of years ago, due to the needs in the district, just because with two, we wouldn't be able to serve all the students, and we can't turn away students when they turn three or turn an I E P.
And then, uh, the out-of-district tuition down there, that's like a hundred and seventy-five doll, uh, percent increase. That's the one that you said there was a question about?
That's Norfolk Aggie.
That's, okay.
That's the Bristol, and Bristol.
So then you add the, the transportation, and that's what gets to a hundred and ninety-three percent.
Transportation is just in the general transportation line.
Good.
Yeah, but just out of curiosity for my own sake, not just, um, what is the yearly athletic fee? Like, what do the, what do the families have to pay?
Three hundred dollars.
Three hundred?
I always wanna save some, you know, and we'll, they look to increase that in the future.
No, I'm, I'm not suggesting that, I was just asking, I mean, what it is for my own business.
It's a one-time fee, and we like that, because it encourages kids to play more than one sport.
Is it still cap a family?
It does, as six hundred as a family can.
Anything else? David, anything?
You know, it's funny, cause I was gonna ask the same question, have you looked at increasing any of the fees that you're able to increase?
We have, yep, we've talked about athletics.
We've talked about extracurricular fees, we've talked about increasing parking fees.
So, any votes?
We have not finalized the decision yet, it has not come to, um, we haven't discussed it in open meeting, it's kind of been a conversation with Mark and Kathy, right? Um, but that is likely the direction that we're gonna go.
I mean, I would just think from a process standpoint, this is, you would be doing it during the budget season, cause that obviously impacts how much you request it.
It doesn't make a huge difference, though.
Unfortunately, it doesn't make as much as you would think, but it does allow me to more generously apply the revolving accounts to the, um, the contribution. Like athletics, we raised the fee last year, I, I'm a firm believer that you should raise prices a little bit every year, right? To keep up with inflation, then people don't have sticker shock as much. Um, however, this year, some of our teams didn't make tournament, and we lost a tournament that typically comes to this, to the school. So the gate receipts are down more than the increase in fees generated for us. It's still good to increase them, you know, next year, we might be in all the tournaments. It's more, a more flu, fluid number than I would like.
Yeah, I mean, look, I mean, I think that honestly, I've, I've met with Kathy and Mark multiple times, and obviously, um, David and Robin as well, earlier in the year. I think they've really done as good of a job as they can, try to look at what they can do with the budget impacts. It just comes as a backdrop that there was language used in the past, the Student Opportunities Act was gonna be a panacea, and I kept on warning it wouldn't be. And, you know, in the past, when it went up one point two million, you guys led with that. And this year, it's eighty-five thousand, which barely pays for a teacher. And so, not, so the point is, is that not only are we receiving state aid, this is not federal dollars, this is state dollars. If you actually look really at the state aid receipts this year, we actually go negative. They are actually charging us more than given, we're actually two hundred thou, so, if we didn't have to pay a single dollar for anything in the entire town, I owe the state two hundred dollars on July first, um, on two hundred thousand dollars on July first, which is absurd. Um, and so, we're starting in the negative, and I'm not exactly sure, I mean, we've already reached out to the state delegation, but they're both freshmen, they're not gonna have a lot of clout, um, and, and we cannot see on the school side, an eighty-five thousand dollar increase, on a million dollar increase. And on the town side, we're literally getting seventeen thousand dollars more for a million dollars on that side. Like, that, the business model doesn't work, just doesn't work, it's nobody's fault in this room, the business model doesn't work. And so, um, we are fortunate, cause we have been really good about our budgets. Um, we have, we have neighboring towns that, you know, are laying people off, specifically in the school department this year, one that's immediately contiguous to us, other towns that have gone for overrides and have failed, and they have been told one percent increases in those towns are laying off. So we're fortunate that we can't, we're not there right now, but eventually this business model is gonna break for everybody. Just the reality.
Never a bad time to mention April first, six o'clock?
Six o'clock, yes.
The elementary school building project.
Yes, thank you.
So at the high school.
Saw the blast.
Yes.
Everywhere.
Noted, it's everywhere.
I shared it as much as I could.
It's on the, it's even on the uh sign out front.
I'll be there.
Well, we appreciate it, we know, we know this is, you know, it's very, it's a difficult decision, you have a lot of work ahead of you, but we we do appreciate it. And again, we're trying to do the best we can, as I know you are for our students, uh you know, staff and the community.
No, across the board, I mean, I think, you know, as as you know, I have three kids go through the school and they're almost, two of them are out in the world doing well and one's still costing me money, but that's okay. Um he is also doing well at school, so I have I have a lot of gratitude towards their, you know, their experience here as it certainly prepared them out in the world, so. Um it's just, you know, I'm I'm not that I'm, you know, I'm not afraid of this year, but I am frightened beyond for next year. Um as a community, not just reflective of the school, but as a community. Um is I think federal dollars will dry up, which will force a redirect for state dollars and and we go down a, I don't know what the path is, so hopefully I'm wrong. Um but I, you know, we're we're in that solid blue state and uh and the the red people are, the red Republican, whatever you wanna call it, are obviously controlling the money. And they they're not gonna get, they're not gonna do us favors, so it'll be interesting.
I told Southeastern, I'll tell you too, because I believe it, I think everybody does a great job, we do. We have a great town, we have a great school system, we have great students, we have great families. So I'm grateful for everything that you guys do do for the town, for the students, for everybody. So thank you, and I do appreciate that you came in, you know, I don't know. Lower than, you know, not dollar wise, but percentage wise, you're trying to work with us and I do, I do appreciate that because we are trying to look out for everyone.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you all. Also, thank you for, um there's been a lot of difficult things that you've had to relay out to the public, um that's happened at school and thank you for handling it right away.
Very welcome, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Relatively painless.
Relatively, right.
Somebody left the phone.
Not me.
There it is, she got it. So long.
Alright, um next on the agenda is uh budget uh budget hearings, I think David's gonna handle these for FY twenty-six.
I am, and some of these I can go through fairly quick and then a couple of questions or um highlights. Moderator is gonna be level funded, um same dollars year over year. The next one, Board of Selectmen, you only only have a handful of changes in it, it's mostly level funded. It's just contractual changes and also the increase in the auditing services, that three-year contract renewed. You approved that earlier in the year, so nothing else that's that's a change under there. Finance committee will be level funded at the same dollar amount. And the finance committee reserve, uh we will level fund that as well. Insurances, I've initially budgeted at five percent, I still don't have that final number. Um although we are late in our budget season, meaning that we've been doing it now for months. We would, some people would say, oh geez, why don't you have the number? But understand, our policy uh renews on July first. So if you had a home policy, you probably don't know your actual premium three to four months in advance. So we're still working with them, but I've budgeted five percent. If I can get a better target number between now and April second, I certainly will. Um C L of weights, uh that budget is basically level funded, just a three percent increase like everybody else in line one. And that brings us next to the veterans budget. So uh in the veterans budget, uh I've had a conversation with each one of you individually. And as chair, Jeff and I met with our veteran services agent. And we have to be realistic, I mean, we're just talking about the school's doing a really good job trying to figure out how they can control costs and still deliver services. And we want to do the exact same thing in the veterans budget. The reality, as I said, over the past four years, we have only paid out collectively fourteen hundred dollars and most of those years zero. Uh and also because of our size, and this is no fault because our clerical person in our VSO, they do everything that they're capable of doing. It's the fact that the um under ten thousand for population is that you have to be in accredited VSO in order to be able to process some of the claims. And because of our population and therefore our VSO is not accredited, they are required then to go elsewhere. So it's not a matter of them not wanting to be helpful to send them elsewhere, it's affected at some level, they're required to send them elsewhere. So with that said, it just doesn't make sense to carry two salaries if we have such limited payout. I can also tell you, I mean, I've worked in two other towns, um one our size, another one much larger. In neither case, that VSO has a clerical person. The VSO is a requirement by state law, the clerical person isn't. And so unfortunately, I think we have to do a weekend, like if we could ask the school and other people to try to make some hard decisions, then we have to do the same thing. And so you'll see here like an actual, you'll see in line fifty-seven seventy uh or sixty-seven seventy-seven veteran benefits benefits. You'll see there with a zero payout in FY twenty-four, the same for the previous. We budgeted twenty-five grand, I wanna keep that number there because if people need the money, we wanna make sure we have the pool of resources to provide it. However, in meeting with with the VSO, uh Jeff and I did present to the VSO that we're thinking that if the right thing to do is to zero out the clerical salaries line. We have already met with the union and that individual to inform them as well. Um it is a decision of the board, I I can't zero it out myself, so I'll be looking for direction in a vote on that. But in my opinion, what we would be looking to do is on fifty-one twelve clerical salaries, is that we would zero that out. And then because that person also receives longevity fifty-one forty, we would zero that one out as well. I wanna be clear to everybody listening, we would retain the veteran services officer. So people needing veterans services, they still have that person to go to because that should be his job and right now it's a he. If it's a she in the future, it's her. Um and the second thing is, is that I'm recommending that we keep and maintain all of the cash assistance in those accounts as well. So that way, if people come in where they need, we have the money so we can make sure that the veterans are still receiving their benefits.
Yeah, I mean, I've thought long and hard about this, I I I think we can do this without an impact to our veterans. Um and you know, unfortunately, I fiscally speaking, we can do it as well. And I think it's the responsible thing to do as we're asking everybody else to take a hard look. Um again, I don't anticipate it impacting veterans benefit, you know, veteran services. Um it might be a little shift more towards the VSO, obviously without a clerical piece there. Um but again, you know, there's a, there's a sign on that door now, let's just go to Brockton for some of what you need. Um and if and if that's what I, if that's what's happened, then we don't need somebody there uh to point somebody to Brockton.
Yeah, I think procedurally, the only change is, is that the clerical person is physically there fourteen hours a week. So that way she can assist anybody, answer questions, all of those things, what she's doing. So in this case here, the veteran services officer literally is not in the building because the clerical person is doing it. So in the way I envision it, is that instead of the clerical person, it would be the state mandated veteran services officer, the actual veterans agent that is now there fourteen hours a week, providing the exact same service, answering the questions, providing what that person needs to do. So to your point, um regardless if it's the clerical person or the VSO, the services should be provided. But because we need a VSO, that's who should be doing it so that we would still be looking to cover that office the same fourteen hours a week as we've been doing. Along with the phone number, because people do call that clerical person outside of those fourteen hours. And in this case, they would call the VSO outside of those office hours, which from the other town I worked at is identical to what they did. The VSO is there for a handful of hours, posted a number, and you called that person when when that person wasn't in the office.
It just makes sense.
Yeah, I'd have to agree, I mean, the the I think, I think the 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 numbers um in the payouts from previous years kind of put that all into makes sense, that's what we have to do.
So if that's the case, I can do one of two things, either one, you can take a vote to zero out those lines today. Or recognizing that it sounds like this consensus, I will just zero them out. Because my job and my role is at your next meeting, is that I'm gonna present to you a balanced budget. And so I will do two things, one is, is that I will incorporate what you are agreeing to and make any other adjustments that will be itemized, so you'll see them. And then you ultimately take a vote at that point. So you can either do that vote today, or you can do that vote then, it's your choice. But if you're gonna do it then, I'm hearing that it's okay to take that, those numbers out. If you do it now, then obviously I'll be mandated to take the numbers out.
Yeah, I make a motion that we uh accept the the budget for the veterans line number fifty-four thirty as presented. Well, we wanna zero it out, well, excuse me.
So it actually would be to zero fifty-one twelve and fifty-one forty.
Yeah.
Pardon, then it would be to zero out line fifty-one twelve and fifty-one forty.
Second.
All in favor, aye, aye. Excuse me, sorry about that.
That's okay, thank you very much. Um our next budget is historical, that is being level funded as well. And the last one, which is the benefits, this is our nondiscretionary budget, so. Right now, I'm looking at a six percent increase, just real quickly, line one fifty-one seventy contributory retirement. Uh that's a large number, that number is mandated by the state, it is managed by the county. And that'll be eight point two five percent now until about twenty thirty-three. So that's a big hit, that's that's not easy. The positive is this, is that all employees hired after nineteen ninety-six, which certainly includes me and Christine, is that we self-fund. So long-term, there is no cost to the town for our pensions because after nineteen ninety-six, it went up as to what the contributory retirements are. This number here is exclusively to make up for what's called legacy employees. So anybody that was hired before ninety-six, or eighty-eight, or even I think eighty-three, but they all got stair-stuffed through that period of time. And obviously, those people may not be working for us, but they're retired. So if they're retired and they've been retired for twelve years, we're paying the difference now through this line. By twenty thirty-three to twenty thirty-four, that budget then becomes whole. That's why they're increasing it so much because it's state mandated to get to that number. So in theory, around twenty thirty-three to twenty thirty-four, that number is gonna drop to very, very little. You will only actually be paying the county administrative costs, I have no idea what it will be, I'll just make up a number. I'll just make it easy and say, right now that number is three point six million, maybe the administrative cost at that point is five hundred thousand. You just say three million, so we'll see how that all plays out. Anyway, that's state mandated. Right now, again, same thing in insurance, work is coming up, I'm budgeting five percent. Um police and fire, that's gone up a little bit um in reference to um um we have to, this line here um is for our auxiliary police, our auxiliary fire, and um so those lines have gone up just a little bit. Um our health insurance, right now I'm showing four percent, we just got rerated, it'll be at seven percent. Um now, seven percent is again of a big number, but the positive is state GIC is over ten and many others are looking at larger than ten. So I'm not happy with the number, but at least it is low in comparison to others. We are part of a commu- of a consortium of twenty-six other communities, it's twenty-seven of us. So we feel like we really do get more bang for our buck, so we've made an effort. Um and I think it does show because seven's not great, but it's better than others. And the last is, is at fifty-one ninety-three, you have already accepted a handful of retirements this year. Um there are a couple more that you'll be accepting in the near future. So this line is variable based on that, but um I may have to actually increase that line by even more because I've got retirees this year and next year, and by contract, I have to make sure I pay them all out. Um and then that's all for your operational budgets. Uh the last one here is your capital budget requests. Uh Jeff sat on that committee with me, they are all before you. Uh all of them were approved and they were approved on the town side for using free cash, which you could see on the bottom, the subtotal is one point three million. Again, we have about three million, so we will be able to do that. And since I have been here, is that we've had kind of a doctrine that we try to use our free cash to be able to cover all of these expenses. Because if you don't look at our debt line, it is extremely low. It is one reason why in the twelve years that we have gone from A-one to double A-plus in our bond rating. Um for a small town, our only next one is triple A, it's very rare based because we're so small.
Yep.
We we may get there one day. Um anyway, with that said, um all these we have um looked to fund at about one point three million in pay cash. The water department has two articles, one is, is a plow truck that they would be, or dump truck here. Um a dump truck uh that they would be using water surplus for, so that would not be a borrowing article. Their big one is to their Seer Norman Treatment Plant that the town has already approved ten million for, but going out to bid unfortunately came in much higher and therefore they need that difference, so about six million dollars to cover that difference. Um so all of those at this point has been what's been approved at the capital budget committee. That's made up of Jeff and I and the treasurer, uh he and three people from the school and three people from the finance committee. Um because the capital budget committee has reviewed this, that doesn't mean it's approved, all it means is that it's a positive recommendation. The Board of Selectmen will see these at your next meeting, you will have the actual article. And at that point, you will vote whether you ought to place them on the warrant. In your next meeting on April sixteenth, you will vote on your recommendation, yes or no. Excuse me, but what I do is I started this many years ago, is I presented to you a week uh meeting in advance. So that way you have a couple of weeks to be able to look at it, review it, digest it, so you're better prepared when you come back on April second. So I know that was a little unwinded, I apologize. Jeff, I don't know if there's something else you wanna add, I I still can answer any questions.
No, um no, I mean, to run through it quickly, carpeting in the uh in the COA kind of completes a flooring project that's been going on for a few years. Voting booths, we've all voted, well, I hope we all voted in town, um what we have there right now is is probably ten years old and a little rickety. Never, never wanna push down too hard on marker on that. Um but Annie's found some pods, basically they're they're four um four booths attached, you know, all combined to one. And ADA accessible as well, um they have a shelf in it that drops down, um which is a bonus. Um the South Elm Street Bridge, it's almost five hundred thousand dollars, the state paid uh to do all the engineering with that. And the state is picking up half the cost, um so that uh that will get that fixed. It's a bridge, but it's really almost a culvert, it's it's not, like if you're looking for it, you gotta really look for it. But nonetheless, it needs repair. Um dump trucks just age, the mowers age, um same with water, um the plow truck age, when I say age, they're around twenty years old. Um nothing new there. Um the fire department, uh fill station, they have, they replaced one a year or two ago. And this is the other being replaced, is they can't get parts anymore for the old fill station. Uh the power ambulance cart, um same sort of thing, that's a thing that'll lift, that fortunately stops them from having to lift somebody like me up into the ambulance. Um and the electronics and everything on the one that we have right now is is passed. Um the jaws, um we purchased new jaws of life, this is just some additional equipment that goes along with it to give it full functionality. Police department's done one cruiser, I think, for the last two years, um and this is a request for two, traditionally they go one, two, one, two. Um and tasers, uh the current tasers that they have are no longer um, I wanna say repairable, but the um it it's just they've reached sort of end of life and and we can't continue to replace them, so. That cost right there is a ten-year cost for the tasers, um and we go from there. The school cameras need to be replaced, um they are ten years old and and they, half of them are out. I had a side conversation with S R O Packard today and they told me, gave me some insights to just how bad they are. Uh the defibrillators, um we may have the opportunity to adjust that that number a little bit thanks to a program in Plymouth County. And then the technology upgrades are Chromebooks, um as the students enter the seventh grade. They pretty much keep the Chromebook through graduation, so they've got five years of use on the Chromebook and it's kinda hard to recycle them after five years, so. Quick rundown, but um it's good stuff, if you have any other questions, we can take it from there.
Yeah, I just wanna go back to the benefits real quick with the health insurance. When we spoke the other day, David, you didn't know what the final number was gonna be, so I was actually doing a little bit of research today. And I came up with anywhere between seven and ten, so when you said seven, I was happy.
Yep, we just got rated this week.
Yeah.
Alright, moving along, approve the meeting minutes of February eighteenth.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February eighteen, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Accept the meeting minutes March fifth for review.
I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of March fifth, twenty twenty-five for review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Site plan review, special permit, planning board, lighthouse yoga and wellness. And uh it is part of the Healthy Smiles co- complex, if you will, or or building uh next. next to what I like to call Daybreak.
Yeah, yeah. You're fitting the place.
It is.
Favor. Mine too.
Yep, so there's three units there. They're looking to use Unit Two, which is in the middle. And so it'll go for the planning board, the site plan review. But again, our bylaw brings it to you in case you have any comments, and if you do, we'll pass them on.
No, I know there was an issue with parking with the spa there in terms of the number of beds, based on what the, what Healthy Smiles had. And I find it interesting, because I've never driven by that parking lot and seen more than two or three cars there, aside from maybe a Sunday morning where the daybreak overflow makes their way in there. So I'm all for business in town, and I, you know, I think parking will probably be the piece that comes up. But again, I understand what we, what we have to allocate, but realistically, I've never seen that front lot full, so.
Me either, but it seems as though they've worked out a, some sort of a, you know, agreement with the neighbor anyway.
So I'm, I'm, I, we vote.
I like yoga. Let's go.
Yep.
Yeah, so if you have no comments, we'll just say you have no comments, if that's acceptable to the board.
No comment.
All right, continuing along, vote for the picture for the annual town report.
So we placed a couple of pictures in here, and so, which one you like is the one we'll use.
I like the next one, that one.
Same.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm always stuck on the bridge.
I'm on the bridge.
Yeah, I like the bridge. Just, just saying.
I like the bridge.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Vote on the annual report dedication.
So what I did was I placed a recent booklet, because it's interesting. You know, some years, you have people that pass away that only wanted to. In this past year, we had some really notable people that did a lot of service and a lot of good for the town. And so, you know, we've given you the names. It's always a little bit difficult to pick and choose, but if, I gave you this most recent one, because if you open up the inside cover, you'll see we had some very notable people that passed away that year. But we usually do a special dedication to one person, and we did it to Bruce. And so, you know, I think Eldon, I mean, just everybody on, I mean, Bob Smith was a selectman, and he was a fantastic finance committee chair for a very long time. But I don't think anybody rivals Eldon. And so, and you know, and we also had Officer Kaminsky, who for twenty-four years was a fantastic police officer in town. This only comes from a legacy of police officers in West Bridgewater. And we also had a town moderator. And so we have some really great people that unfortunately we lost this year. But I want you to see what we've done in the past, because I, I think that, based on recent history, or all history out of West Bridgewater, you know, you probably do the inside cover to Eldon, and you would do in memoriam for everybody else. But it's your choice, and I want you to see what it would look like. That's why I provided you those books.
No, I'm with you. I mean, Eldon's length of service, while, well, we're grateful for everybody on this list, but Eldon's length of service.
Can't be beat.
No. No, not by me.
Yeah.
So, but I, I, you know, along those lines, the in memoriam is appropriate. I just, I wonder. Yeah, I don't know. Thought of the in memoriam, if we can include a picture as well. I don't know if that's feasible, possible.
Of each person?
Yeah.
Can we add pages?
Sure, yeah, just cost.
And, I mean, what, what would the cost be to add a couple pages? I, I think it's kind of nominal.
I mean, one page. You can, there's, there's one page here, and then you just add one more, and you
The backside.
Put them over two pages.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a front and back, small.
So are you thinking of trying to get a picture for every person that you're gonna do?
Well, I mean, as I said, that realistically, we won't. So then somebody won't have a picture. Somebody will. Maybe we're better off without it.
Yeah. I think that in memoriam is, is, is nice. Is, is very nice. Again, there would be an issue trying to get a picture of everybody, I think, as well.
Yeah, I'd be completely open to whatever you guys could come up with between the meetings. Just 'cause we don't know if you're gonna be able to get all the pictures, and we don't meet again. And you probably need a decision like right now.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with Eldon as a dedication, in memoriam with names, and obviously what the, the titles that are listed.
Yep.
Their contributions here.
Then I would just ask for a motion to that, and then we'll obviously start the, we'll start the process.
Make a motion to dedicate the twenty twenty-five annual town report to Eldon and the rest of the people on this memorandum to the in memoriam.
I will edit that to say the twenty twenty-four book, and I second it.
Caught myself, but I'll say it. Caught myself, but I'll say it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Super. Vote to award the surgery DPW contracts, fourteen and fifteen, line painting for the next year. Prices are there. No particular discussion on my part. Anybody?
Nope.
I'm taking a motion.
Make a motion to approve the surgery DPW service contract, fourteen and fifteen, line painting, March one, twenty twenty-five, February twenty, twenty twenty-six as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Vote to approve the Class Two license name change for the car lot to Monty's Cycle Shop located on seven fifteen North Main Street.
So you may remember that Monty's was here before, and they sold the Harley-Davidson franchise, but they retained the used car lot. They had changed it from the Monty's to the used car lot, and they realized that, I mean, their name really is synonymous, synonymous with West Bridgewater. So they're making no other changes. There's nothing else. They just want to go back to their original name. And so it just requires a vote of all.
All right. Any discussion?
None.
Nope.
None in motion?
Make a motion to approve the Class Two license name change for the car lot to Monty's Cycle Shop Inc. Located on seventeen North Main Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Continuing along, communication and reports from boards, commissions, and town officials. Vote to accept Howard Anderson's resignation from the planning board effective immediately.
Yep, so once the, an elected person turns it in and is stamped by the town clerk, it's immediately effective. But we have a culture in town where the selectmen also vote, and I think it's nice, because you, you know, you're aware. So, but if you want to take a vote, you can. If you just, you're, your choice, but it's certainly FYI to the board, FYI to the board that he has officially resigned from the plan.
Entertain a motion to accept it.
Second. Make a motion. Second, third.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
The meeting is coming apart.
Yep.
All right, correspondence from the public to determine a course of action. We also, at this point, we're gonna hold off on Mr. Anderson's letter, resignation.
We've got a return.
Yes, I was just giving that to you. It'll be on the next agenda.
Super. There's hearing, there is no correspondence. We have, Mo is, is going for two long nights in Town Hall. Thank you. But it is public comment period, Mo. This is your opportunity to, to add anything you like. All right, as we move on to the town administrator's report, I want to go back to the beginning of this meeting real quick, where David Moore handed out many compliments on a well-run Town Hall. And I want to say thank you for that, David, because that, that is you. So we appreciate all that you do. It's nice to hear it from somewhere of an outsider who also has perspective in many different Town Halls. So we are, we're grateful for that, and just want to say thank you.
Well, thank you. I mean, I very much appreciate that. We have really, my job becomes easier when you have good quality people. And I think, you know, we've implemented a hiring policy through the years. We've got really good quality people. David is a really good quality guy. Mike, you are very instrumental in helping Dave come on board. And I also have a board that's very supportive of all of that. So, you know, I think it all works very well, but thank you. And under my report, really, it's usually just an FYI. Field Day will be April twenty-seventh. However, I do want to let you know, because in your packet, you'll see that part of their request is that this year, they're also looking to do food trucks, and they're also looking to do a one-day liquor license. So that has not been approved, because I can't do that, only the board can. That paperwork has not come forward yet, so you may see that in the future. If they did, if they don't turn it in, they're not gonna be able to do one or the other, so. I know the police chief has been in touch with, with the president. I know Christine's been in touch with the lady who has processed the paperwork as well. So we're just waiting for that paperwork. Chapter ninety finds, one piece of good news, is that we, historically, we bring in about three hundred twenty-one thousand dollars per year. The state has decided to bond more money than it historically has. So may not be good for long-term debt at the state level, but I mean, at least for a short-term impact to us. That means our annual allocation increases from three hundred twenty-one thousand to four hundred ninety thousand. So that'll be at this year's town meeting, so that's a positive. So that gives our DPW more money to use in order to pave, you know, and take care of infrastructure. The left, the next item is a, just an FYI. So our COA freezer is close to twenty years old. It has had some mechanical issues over the last couple of years. We've invested about fifteen hundred dollars into it, and it just failed again at the end of last week. And it was gonna cost about twenty-five hundred dollars to repair it. Again, it's twenty years old, so it gets harder to get more parts and all those things. So we had a choice. We could either spend twenty-five hundred dollars more to repair it, or we could spend ninety-four hundred dollars to buy a new one. And my thought process was to spend, it was actually eighteen hundred, to spend eighteen hundred dollars over the last couple of years, plus twenty-five hundred, I'm approaching five grand, and we still have a twenty-year-old freezer. So I authorized Marilyn to go ahead and purchase a new freezer. That will take about three days to come in, so that way she'll be good. However, it obviously was not in our budget. So I asked her to lean on the budget, because that is what we'll do at the end of every year. Is we'll lean on every budget to try to make sure we stay within it. Since this was an unexpected expense, we'll see if at the end of the year, if we have to do some type of a transfer. But if we do, you know, you're aware of it today. Finance committee bylaw. So we made some changes to this bylaw a couple of years ago, which was really just reducing from nine to seven, and a couple of other little changes. But what we have found is that this bylaw is just not workable. I'm gonna tell you real quickly as to the way it's supposed to work, and how, what's not working, and how we're trying to fix it. So the way the, the way the bylaw currently reads is as follows. Is that within sixty days after town meeting, the moderator is supposed to appoint a subcommittee. That subcommittee, then, at some time, not defined in the bylaw, then appoints new members to the finance committee, or reappoints whoever existing members are. We have not seen a subcommittee appointed within sixty days and years. And that's not just our current moderator. That was previous moderators as well. Think about it. Most people after town meeting, you go into the summer months. Things happen. You go on vacation. You want to have, you have good intentions to get things done. The second part to that is, is that the moderator is not a public body. The moderator is not, is only a single person. He or she is not subject to the open meeting law. There's no meeting. There's no application process. There's none of that. And you can't mandate. It's an elected person. So that moderator can literally just pick five people that they met at Market Basket, or the Trukies, or, or someone, family members, whomever. There's no transparency. Maybe nine people applied and only five took it. Maybe nobody applied and you just appointed five. Who knows? There is no transparency on that. The second part to that is, is that the subcommittee at that point is required to be five people that are not affiliated with any other board or committee or as an employee of the town. The intent was good. It meant that they have no affiliation to anyone. So therefore, they're kind of like blind as to who they're appointing to the finance committee. But these bylaws were all written decades ago, certainly before the open meeting law came into, into existence. So you take five people who have never sat on a committee. If they have, it was a private committee, not necessarily a public committee. They don't know how to post an agenda. They don't know how to call a meeting. They're not necessarily good with Robert's rules. They don't have a professional staff to help them, and they don't know how to communicate to people. And that doesn't mean that they're doing something wrong in that. They just don't know. I think of, I ask all three of you, think of the first day you were elected as a board member, and if you came here and you didn't have any professional staff, and you look, and the other people next to you, you didn't know, and it was the first time you ever met them. Because there's no process. And then the five of you would have to figure out what you're gonna do moving forward. It's become unworkable. So like, for example, this year, it turned out that over the last couple of years is that the subcommittee's process, they weren't sure who to appoint. They weren't sure who to reappoint. They had different processes as to how to get the applications. There was some communication with the town clerk, but the town clerk goes off of appointment letters. They did turn in minutes, but the town clerk should not be reading minutes to figure out what you did. When you make an appointment, the staff turns an appointment letter to the clerk, and the clerk knows then to swear somebody in. But those appointment letters have not been done in years. So we had a member this year who eventually got appointed. But she realized that there was a flaw in the process, and so she kept on requesting, when are you gonna meet? When, I want to reapply. I want to apply. She hadn't been chosen the previous year. She was, she was a very interested party in wanting to be on the finance committee. There was an existing person who didn't even know that a seat was up, and then was being told to reapply, so he did. But when that subcommittee met, they didn't reach out to either candidate to show up to have the meet. Now, one person showed up, because she was highly motivated to want to be on it. The other person wasn't even aware that the meeting was called. And so they made a decision to appoint the new person versus reappoint. That's fine. No issues. They have that right to do it. Then two months go by, and the chair of the finance committee has to now call a meeting. She doesn't even know he's been appointed. Nobody called, told her. The subcommittee doesn't know to reach out to the chair. And a day before that meeting, I happened to be on the phone with the person not reappointed. He never knew he was never reappointed. He just assumed that he was. We don't want to do that.
No. And to be clear, it's not a fault of the subcommittee. It's a fault of the lack of structure around the whole process.
Exactly, exactly. And so, you know, in years past, sometimes the moderator would take a more active role in holding the hand of the subcommittee. He's, you know, his, his work obligations have prevented him from being able to do that. But most importantly, the law doesn't require it. Once you make an appointment, for example, you guys appoint the ZBA. The Board of Selectmen does not hold the hand of the ZBA. They are now a legal public body under the definition of the open meeting law that is now independent to do what it is that they're supposed to do. So the same thing with this subcommittee. So the subcommittee doesn't have any direction. It's not their fault. They legitimately are trying, but they've struggled. So I have met with the finance committee and had a conversation with them. I have talked to the town moderator. I've talked to the town clerk. We feel that here is an opportunity to maybe make this a little bit more, with more structure. So what we're, what we're going to recommend is that during the month of September, after annual town meeting, there's a reason why we're choosing September. I'll tell you why in a second. But we will create structure. So during the month of September, after annual town meeting, the Board of Selectmen will call a meeting. You already have two. If you want to call a third, you can. But you have two predetermined meetings during that month, of which the town clerk and the moderator will be present. And together, you guys create an appointment committee. And at that point, we're on camera, there's minutes, there's professional staff. There is, we know how many applications came in. We will invite people to be before you, and then you'll be able to, in a transparent process, make that appointment. We will then send out letters to the town clerk's office. We will send out letters to the people not chosen. These are things we already do. And you already appoint ninety-nine point nine percent of all committees in town. Now, you already do that. You do that, it's usually effective July first. So you already do this, so we're very good at this. So it creates transparency, and it's fair to all parties involved. And the reason we chose September is because in the middle of the summer, we will do end-of-year transfers. We just talked about the council on aging, for example. So if we were to name a sub, a finance committee, say, in June, and it's different people, they're not gonna know what happened the previous year, which was the budget that the, that they have already reviewed. So Mo is sitting on the finance committee. If we have to do an end-of-year transfer, he understands, because he's been there for a year. But if we name a new committee and then say, let's do an end-of-year transfer in July, they won't know it. They've had no jurisdiction over it. So we think this makes the most amount of sense. The town clerk is in favor of the process. The town moderator is in favor of the process. I have discussed it with members of the finance committee. Tomorrow night, you will be at their meeting. We will be looking for a vote. Most of the members were, I would say enthusiastically in favor of it. And at least one of the member who's very close to the subcommittee member that's been there before. who's very close to the subcommittee member that's been there before, is that like, they're in favor of it as well, because they all struggle, and it's not their fault. They want to do well, they didn't have the tools. And there was one member at least voiced some, some concern. We'll see how that plays out tomorrow night. We are going to ask the Board of Selectmen, because somebody has to sponsor it, so somebody would have to move it at town meeting and initially speak to it. The moderator doesn't want to move it, because if he has to move it, he will then have to recuse himself as moderator, and then that just becomes cumbersome. Somebody else has to take the microphone. However, he wants to speak to it, and he's willing to speak to it to say he's in favor. Because, you know, for anybody who wants to worry about turf, so he's losing a little bit of authority from not being able to name the subcommittee, but he recognizes this is not workable. So he's in favor of it and is willing to speak in favor of it as well.
No, I agree. I mean, I go back to my, my appointment happened, I, I know I couldn't actually be here for my appointment or my interview, because I was moving my son back into school, and I know that didn't happen 60 days after town meeting. So I mean, and that's five years ago now, so I mean, the process has been flawed for quite some time, and we just need some structure. And again, thank you to all the subcommittee members that have worked hard to, to do this and, and fight their way through the confusion, like, we're grateful for their efforts. But I think this is just, this will just make it more fair. The other part is, is, as David mentioned, it'll be on camera, it'll all be recorded, it'll be visible for everybody. The process is more transparent, which I also think is important, so.
Yeah, just looking at the, the first line of section two, the language is very vague. It's saying shall appoint, not must, and it's giving options, so I, I agree that there needs to be a review on here and a change in, in some better direction.
You say first line, section two?
Yeah, section two, moderator shall appoint a committee of five members. I feel like the word shall, as opposed to, is that will?
Yeah, so, so by law, shall is equivalent to will.
Or must.
But, but that section is what we will be crossing out.
Yeah.
Because he appoints or she appoints, and then they appoint more, and it's.
And, but we have learned already that 60 days isn't the right term, right?
I can make a legitimate claim that not a single person on the finance committee is actually a legitimate appointment, because we have not followed the bylaw in years. Now, we would never do that, right? This is, we're not talking billions of dollars, and they are only an advisory committee. Like, they don't make real, they don't make hiring, firing decisions, for example. But it's been unworkable, and I think it's best that we put something together that is workable.
Who for it?
I would get the public.
Oh, sorry, Jeff.
Oh, go ahead, Mo.
Just a quick comment, I had to go through that process with the appointed outside group, and although they were all well-intentioned, it was very confusing how we went through it, you know, with resumes and, you know, it just doesn't work. That's my comment.
Yep, I agree.
So if it's acceptable to the board, then what we will do is, is that you will be seeing warrant articles to place on the warrant at your next meeting, and I will bring this here to the finance committee. We will be looking for a vote of support from the finance committee tomorrow night. I will report back to this board at that time, and then at that point, I would be asking for the Board of Selectmen. I mean, a list of finance committee totally shoots it down, which I, I know they're not, based on the last conversation. But I would be asking the Board of Selectmen at that point to sponsor it, place it on the warrant, and then eventually move it at town meeting. Next one is, is that we have an election coming up, and, and so we have our quote-unquote debate on March 24th. I'm saying quote-unquote because unfortunately, we have two very important boards, the lot of commissioners and the Board of Assessors, and nobody pulled papers. So those are gonna be vacant seats, so there'll be nobody speaking at either one of those. On the Board of Selectmen, Mike is, is up for reelection, and he is running unopposed. And there is only one board or committee that has a contested race, which is the school committee. There is one incumbent, there is two other people running, and so there will be three people technically running for two seats. So there will be a debate for that. The process has always been, is that questions will be submitted to the town clerk's office in advance. The town clerk will moderate the meeting, and, and so she's the only one that sees those questions, and so she will ask whatever questions she deems most appropriate at that time. If people have, show up to the debate and they have questions, they will present them to me, and then Annie and I will review them, and then we will provide, we will then ask, Annie will make the final decision to ask them. And the only reason that we review them is because when we started this, sometimes people use language that we can't reuse. And quite frankly, I've seen this, that sometimes people ask questions of much more of a personal nature. And if you're running for US Senate, maybe appropriate, but not at this level. You know, so, so that is going to be that evening. The last thing that I did want to mention is, or I guess a couple of things, one is, is that your capital, your budgets are all over. You've heard from everybody, and so you'll be voting on the budget next time. The other item that I want to tell you is I want to say thank you to Jeff and Christine. I also want to say thank you to Annie and Dylan. They have done a lot of work on launching a new website. And that new website is gonna launch at the end of this week, so I think people will hopefully be excited by it. We went to town meeting last year and got funding, and so I don't know, Jeff, if you want to mention anything about that as well.
No, I, I mean, honestly, the, the back half of the work has, has been led by Christine and Annie and, and everybody else in town hall that have really taken the time to go through the training. And I gotta thank them because definitely longer than probably what it should have been. We were, they were updating calendars in, in the current website, and the new website, and transferring data, and moving stuff over, so. Thank you very much for kind of taking the lead on that, and excelling where I knew nothing. So I greatly appreciate that piece of it. I'm excited to get it out there. You know, the front page, there, there are two sign-ups right away. One is for our emergency alert system, and then there's a second one for alerts within the website itself. So as we start to build those alerts out, we can communicate more effectively. Once the, once we go live with that, that particular part of the website, the next piece that will be built out as, as we contracted originally, will be for them to develop a mobile site, and eventually end up with an app in the App Store, things like that, which is, which is really where you're gonna get most of the communication these days, where you can push alerts to phones and, and things like that. So not necessarily more work or redesign, but once they, once we, once we've signed off and said, yes, it's good, we come back and look at a mobile site. So almost done with the website, but I think we've got a refreshed look. I think some things are easier to find, and I greatly appreciate, you know, both the committee and, and everybody in town hall, who over the last two months or three months have, have poked holes at it to, to try to shore it up and, and make it the best it can be, so I'm excited.
Yeah, and this fulfills the mission that you have, to try to make sure we have better communication resonance. So again, thank you, and I'm looking forward to it. And then your next meeting will be on April 2nd, which, as I said to you earlier, you will actually be voting on your budget, and you will also be voting on warrant articles to place on the annual town meeting warrant.
And one more time, the, the school building committee, the next sort of public hearing update is April 1st, at I think, we said 6:00 or 6:30 PM, so, Mike, I wish you well in the debate against yourself. I will be away, but I'll do my best to watch it.
I'll ask a few questions.
You'll get denied.
It's been a long meeting, I want to thank everybody for it, I want to thank Christine for putting the AC in for a little while in the middle before Marcy cut it off, but we will, we will go from there. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second.